It is now August 6, 2013, at 6:00 PM here in City Hall at 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas, and the City Council is now in order. I'd like to call upon Pastor Larry Dickinson from the Faith Assembly of God to lead us on our invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance, and then followed by the Texas pledge. All rise, please.
Father, so often we open our meetings with prayer, and so often it is almost perfunctory. But we're living in a time that is very difficult. You have blessed us with life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Father, you further blessed us in this great state to be among people who knew what it was to sacrifice and to prepare for the future. But we find ourselves in times when we need your help. Lord, we need your reign. We need the reign that you can send on our land. Father, we need wisdom as we deal with the multitudinous issues that we face today. And Father, we need mercy, and kindness, and gentleness to be restored to us. We pray, Lord, that you would give these men who lead our city the wisdom that they need to lead us wisely, and we pray that you would bless this session with your presence in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. We will now move into the open-mic session. The City Council will provide an opportunity for citizens to present concerns or address issues that are not matters of consideration listed on the posted meeting agenda during this open-mic session. A person -- Justice Mike. A person wishing to address the City Council must first register with the City Secretary and provide the following information: their name, resident address, daytime telephone number, and the subject matter to be presented. Only one person may approach the microphone at one time, and only that person at the microphone may be recognized by the presiding officer. Thank you. Will be allowed to speak for no more than three minutes unless otherwise directed by the presiding officer. Speakers must address their comments to the presiding officer rather than individual City Council members on this or the staff. Speakers may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the City Secretary, who will make the information available to the City Council and the City Manager if requested. The Council will be allowed to receive input or information for the further agenda items, but will not be allowed to enter into any discussions. The Council shall allot a maximum of 30 minutes for the open-mic during the designated Council At this time, I don't believe we had any open mics tonight, did we? Okay? So at this time, we'll move into the consent agenda. Council, you've had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes of the Council meeting of July 16th, the consideration of the resolution authorizing the laws of Kenmer Maris, PLLC, to file the request for the contested hearing with the TCEQ, and to consider and adopt a resolution calling for the general election, and number two, to be to consider adoption of a resolution calling for a special election, and also number three, to consider the approval of an interlocal agreement between the city and the North Central Texas Council of Government for development of mitigation implants. Counselors, are there any discussion or changes you'd like to make to the consent items? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda at this time.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen, and a second by Councilman Perkel. Any more discussion, Council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. At this time, I would now declare -- At this time, I would now declare the Granbury City Council to convene into open session, and that all members are present except for the Mayor Ricky Pratt. The City Council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section: Section 551.071, consultation with the attorney. We will now convene. Everybody still with us, sir? We will now reconvene from our executive session with no action taken back there. I would allow -- now I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city attorney and the city manager to negotiate with the county -- or to negotiate with the county, Haynes &amp; Boone, and other interested parties for a joint representation of the hearing, of the State Office Administration hearing regarding the VRA water permit number 5851. Do I have a motion?
I still move.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Please.
We have a second by Councilman Couch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We will move to do so. Thank you. We will now go into the deliberation agenda, the first item being a public hearing in consideration of a request of welcoming and association on behalf of the 3925 Partners LTD for a variance of Section 5.6A of subdivision ordinance to allow for an early building permit to be issued for the commercial construction of an approximately 22.070 acre tract of land within the WR McQuary survey abstract number 385 proposed to be platted as lots 1-5 Block 1 of the Kroger Marketplace addition. The property is located generally at the 3600 and 3628 FM 4 and 3925 East Highway 377. Could I get Scott's content?
Thank you, Mayor.
Lights on this.
Counsel, Mr. Manager. What's being requested by the applicant at this point in time is a request by the applicant Kroger on behalf of Winkelman Associates, their engineer, to actually request a limited early building permit. To give you a little history, we've done this prior to other similar type developments. We've done this with HEB, for example. Our subdivision ordinance requires that prior to a building permit being issued, that all public improvements be installed, inspected, and accepted, and a two-year maintenance bond by the contractor be filed with the city, ASBILs be filed with the city. In this particular scenario, the developer would like to start development at the same time, or start some of the prep work at the same time that the utilities are being installed. One of the things that cities in general have a problem with is basically emergency access, just in case somebody gets injured out on the site. It's typical that we see water lines and hard surface about the prep site being installed and inspected and accepted prior to going vertical. That's what's being presented tonight, is basically Kroger, the applicant, wants an early limited permit. They want to actually file the PIA in two phases. We're working with -- in earnest with their engineer on that right now. The first phase will allow for the water line loop, which you can see delineated in blue around the site on the plot plan to your left. So you can see it actually around the building footprint. The screen to your right is the impervious cover, which would be the width of a fire lane, that that be installed, inspected, and accepted prior to any post-subgrade prep work prior to going vertical for the site. While they're out there, you can also see they're installing sanitary and storm sewer laterals that will be under the fire lane as well. All this will be rolled into the first phase of the PIA. The second subsequent phase, too, PIA, will incorporate all the public infrastructure outside that building prep area. You do have a letter from the city engineer recommending approval of this as presented. City staff with city engineers providing three conditions being imposed on the approval of this: one, that a PIA between the developer and the city has been duly executed, covering at a minimum that portion of the improvements as itemized in your agenda packet. The improvements for Phase 1 covered by the PIA are installed, inspected, and accepted by the city. Building pads subgrade prep will be allowed during Phase 1 as well. And then lastly, that the impervious cover area depicted in the exhibit, that purple area on your staff report, will be for emergency use only, and no building products, supplies for other trades will be allowed to encumber the emergency access area. Be happy to entertain any questions, should you have any.
Thank you, Scott. I will now open it up to the public hearing. Is everybody in the public who would like to talk on this matter? Counsel, do you have any concerns or issues?
I have one. On your green space stuff, how much of this water are they going to use with the green coverage and everything? Have you figured out how much water they're going to use? Most stores out there, I think we need to look at possibly reducing that.
They actually have a unique situation where they have a private water well that they own on-site, so they can actually tie that private water well to help irrigation and offset some of the metered water costs.
I was to say, put some drain on our public at the same time, because I'm.
Counsel, any more issues? I will now close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion to approve the variances requested by the applicant, provided that the following is done prior to the assurance of the early permit: a PIA between the developer and the city has been duly executed, covering a minimum that the portion of the improvements is itemized at the applicant's various requests; and number two, the improvements for the Phase 1 covered by the PIA are installed, inspected, and accepted by the city. Building pads upgraded preparation will be allowed during the Phase 1 construction improvements; and number three, the previous cover area depicted in the exhibit will be for emergency use, and no building products, supplies, or other trades will be allowed to be stored on the emergency lanes or fire lanes. Do I have a motion, sir?
I still move.
I have a motion by Councilman Perkel. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Any more discussion, Council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next deliberation item is to consider request of Gary Lucre of Liberty G&amp;C Land Corporation for vacating the final plat of lots 1 through 68 of Catalina Bay addition previously contained with the Martin site survey abstract number 502, Hood County, Texas, being appropriate 25.277 acre tract, save and accept a right-of-way dedication along the west side of Waters Edge Drive measuring 32.91 feet by the 151.84 feet by 30.65 feet by 151.62 feet. This request also vacates a previous recorded plat at the same location filed as the Maynard subdivision lots 1 and 2. The property is generally addressed as 1720 Waters Edge Drive. Mr. Stopcheck.
Thank you, Mayor. What's being proposed by the applicant is to take this particular piece of property, and you can see the last final plat that's been filed for record at the courthouse, is Catalina Bay lots 1 through 68. You can also see cutting through the middle of the development is a proposed canal that was supposed to be dredged out. What the applicant is proposing to do is take these lots, 1 through 68, off of the books, and convert the property from platted lots back over to survey. So it'll take it back to survey and be described as its original tract, 20-some-odd acres in survey. The one thing that the mayor mentioned is this particular plat did dedicate a certain amount of area for the expansion of Waters Edge. You can see that generally in red highlighted on your screen. The vacation of the plat does not do away with the dedication that was done prior to filing this plat for record, so the meets and bounds description for the vacating plat does not include the right-of-way dedication, as the city would still retain that right-of-way dedication for Waters Edge Drive, or Waters Edge. The prior plat before Catalina Bay was, as the mayor mentioned, Maynard addition. That's still on file with the county clerk as well. So if the City Council approves the vacation plat as presented, what will happen procedurally is I will take a copy of the minutes and write an affidavit saying that the P&amp;Z and the City Council both voted to approve vacating the plats for Catalina and Maynard. Take that over to the county clerk, and the county clerk will hopefully stamp both filed plats vacated for reference, showing that this property is back in the survey. So city staff recommends approval of the vacating plat as presented, and just as a sidebar note, if a developer wants to develop this property after the vacating plat, after it's put back in the survey, he will now be required to file a preliminary plat and start the process all over again. Staff recommends approval as presented.
Thank you, Scott. Counsel, any discussion?
I have one question, Scott.
Councilman Allen?
Will this go back just as farm land? It won't be zoned commercial or residential or anything?
The zoning currently on the property is patio homes. That zoning request is not being done away with. He still has the patio home district. What it does do is actually take those lots, 1 through 68, off of the recorded books over at the county, and actually just describes this as roughly 25 acres, 25.277 acres within the Martin Sessler survey abstract 502. So in order to entertain any permit activity, by our definition, within the zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance, he has one house there on-site. So in order to conduct any other permissible activity, he has to platter it out again and start the process all over.
But he could change it to a single-family, whatever, if he wanted to rezone it for a replating.
What would happen generally is he'd have to file a preliminary plat, and the preliminary plat would have to accompany generally a rezoning request to whatever the plat depicted for the use of. If he wanted to go single-family R7, for example, he'd have to rezone it to that, and then the plat would have to meet the area requirements for that plat.
Thank you.
Counsel, any more discussion? With that, I'll entertain a motion to recommend approval of the vacating plat as presented by the applicant. Do I have a motion?
Still move.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. It is approved. Our next item is a public hearing regarding a request of Stephen J. Reed, agent for Gary and Linda Schultz, to replat lots 1 Block 1 of the Schultz addition, including a portion of Lot 53A, City of Granbury, and consider approval of said plat. The property is addressed as 123 West Doyle Street and 33333 South Lambert Street. 9/11 addressing shows and addresses as 333 South Lambert Street. Mr. Stopcheck.
Mr. Mayor, this is a request to replat the recorded piece of property that you see there. If you would take note of the western boundary line, you'll see a little panhandle piece that just comes south of Lambert Alley that's outside the current platted boundary. What this replat proposes to do is take that little panhandle area south of the Lambert Alley and roll that into the platted recorded lot, which is here. So you can see that western boundary was extended out to the furthest extent of the panhandle. The little cross-hatched area that you see is a utility easement that's being vacated and subsequently shifted over to the new western property line. So in essence, that's what the replat application proposes to do, is actually take that portion of the property described in survey and just roll it into the previous recorded plat. There are three variances associated with this particular application. 36A is sidewalk requirement variance. As depicted on the map, you can see that this actually abuts an alley and just has a small portion of frontage along the alley. There's really no need for a sidewalk in this particular location. It wouldn't serve anybody. There is a variance to 39, 45, and 46 regarding our requirement for 8-inch sanitary water services. What's being served in that lot for that little portion along Lambert are two 6-inch lines, water and sewer respectfully. And then there's a variance to 33, utility easements, to not extend it to the furthest extent of the platted lot line. What we do in these instances is actually take it to elevation 693, which is the previous recorded Waters Edge. It may be a little further out now, but we'd stop it generally at the VRA water line. City staff recommends approval of the plat with the variances as presented by the applicant.
I'll now open this up to the public hearing. Is everybody in the public who would want to speak on this matter? Mr. Reed? Please state your name and address. Reporting Secretary, please.
Stephen J. Reed, 1840 Acton Highway, Granbury, Texas. And I'm just a here and wanted to let the council know I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have, and so I just wanted to make myself available if there's any questions at all about this request.
Counselor, is there any questions to Mr. Reed? Thank you, Mr. Reed. At this time, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any more concerns, Counselor? With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve, actually with the variances, approve the said applicant with the variances of Section 3.6A and Section 3.9, 4.5, and 4.6, and also Sections 3.3. Do you have a motion?
Sure.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch. Do I have a second?
Second.
You got a second by Councilman Allen down there. Any more discussion, Council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That request is approved. Our next item is a public hearing regarding a request of the City of Granbury to amend sections of the City of Granbury zoning ordinance and consider approval of an ordinance providing for the said amendments. Amendments are proposed to Sections 4.1A, 7.5-C, the table of temporary signs, 11.8, 11.10, and 12.3. The request is also repeal Article 3.14, sign code, contained within this Granbury Code of Ordinance, and as comprehensive signs, regulations are now contained within Article 7 of the Granbury zoning ordinance. Mr. Stopcheck.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, it appears that all of my attachments are no longer here, so we'll just have to work within the framework of the staff report. Ordinance number one, which is proposed to be modified, if I can defer your attention to your attachment, is on the land use matrix, is to remove the allowance for the two-family residential dwelling duplex within patio home. By definition, two-family has a common wall, patio home does not, so this is basically just a clerical adjustment. If I can defer your attention to your attached matrix, you'll see that that area that's in red getting stricken through under patio home will be taken out, and duplex for dwelling will actually be solely within MD1, which is two-family residential. So again, this is just housekeeping work. Similarly, on two, remove the allowance for single-family residential dwellings within the attached interim holding and patio homes, single-family residential estate and single-family residential R12 through 7,000. Again, if I can defer your attention to the land use matrix, single-family attached, by its definition, has a common wall. You can see on the yellow highlighted area that's defined as MD1 or duplex, and town home. Both of those have common walls. Those areas getting stricken out are interim holding, R12, R10, RE, all those single-family residential-type developments without a common wall. Again, that's just another housekeeping issue. Item number three, allow for a single-family residential dwelling with zero lot lines within a town home zoning district. Again, defer your attention to the matrix. If you look at single-family dwelling zero lot line, you'll see under town home that that's been added. Both patio home and town home have zero line lines because they do have a common wall. Item number four, allow for the operation of an indoor theater within the CBD. If I can defer your attention to the second page of the land use matrix, you'll see both indoor and outdoor theater. City staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission are proposing that we allow for indoor theater permitted by right in the CBD, and of course, this affects the Opera House while it's under construction. It's been vacated for longer than six months, so we need to actually have a land use allowance to reopen that and the matrix adjusted accordingly. And then outdoor theaters, city staff and the P&amp;Z is proposing that we actually add an SUP for outdoor theaters. We can look at those on a case-by-case basis under the issuance of an SUP by P&amp;Z and City Item number five, allow for the operation of an outdoor theater we just discussed. Item number six, allow for the operation of a truck and bus rental or leasing within a heavy commercial zone district under the issuance of an SUP. This would be on the third page of your Article 4 land use matrix. You can see highlighted in yellow, there's a proposed S for an SUP permit application in heavy commercial to allow for the discretionary review of truck and bus rental or leasing. If I can defer your attention to the matrix above that, you can see trailer sales or rental is allowed by an SUP within the heavy commercial zone district. You can also conduct car sales. You can have travel trailer sales with the issuance of an SUP. So these are similar type uses. It doesn't obligate the council to approve the SUP. It can look at it on a case-by-case basis. I can tell you, we have a rezoning request and an SUP forthcoming that's driving this zoning ordinance amendment, but by and large, you can see it's a similar type use with comparable uses on the land use matrix, so it was a little bit out of line. P&amp;Z is recommending approval as presented of the changes on the land use matrix to accommodate the discretionary review. Those are the changes to Article 4. Before we go away from the land use matrix, are there any questions of the land use changes on the matrix? Okay, hearing done, we'll proceed to Article 7, which is the sign ordinance. If I can defer your attention to the chart that shows the table of temporary signs, you'll see the allowance for residential signs, maximum area eight square feet, and commercial signs, maximum area 32 square feet. What is driving this is basically we have a comprehensive sign ordinance contained within our zoning ordinance. We have previously utilized the code of ordinances to allow for the permitting of new development coming signs within both commercial and residential zones. A good example is the new Taco Casa. If you notice, there's an eight-by-four board that says "Coming Soon Taco Casa." Right now, our zoning ordinance does not allow for the placement and permitting of that sign. So what we've been doing in the past is actually rolling those dated requirements out of the code of ordinances to allow for the placement of those signs. What we're doing in essence is taking those provisions outside of the code of ordinances, changing the zoning ordinance, bringing those in, and repealing the last of the requirements of the code of ordinances under the sign provision. So this is in addition to the zoning ordinance that allows for placement of commercial and residential signs that aren't contained within our zoning ordinance at this point in time. Is there any questions on Article 7?
I do have one, Scott, on that.
Sure.
The new street signs or the new signs that's got advertising out for businesses, are they going to be legal on that sign you just quoted?
Basically, it's a pretty open-ended sign, so if you have a four-by-eight sign and you say "Coming Soon Plan Development," whatever addition, and it's a residential sign?
No, no, I'm talking about the few ones that we got around town. You know, the ones that says...
The kiosk sign?
Kiosk.
Right.
Right.
Would that have anything to do with what you just said?
No. No, this is in addition to the allowance of advertising on the kiosk sign. Section 11.8, we have a provision in our zoning ordinance for temporary and seasonal sales. There's been some level of confusion between what is the difference between temporary and seasonal. This adjustment, in essence, strikes out the word temporary. We do have an allowance for temporary sales within commercial zones for vendors permitting, sort of like a hot dog vendor under the canopy of Home sort of like a hot dog vendor under the canopy of Home Depot, if they want to do a hot dog depot, for example. They would fall under our vendors allowance within the prescribed zoning district. And this basically sections off and describes what seasonal sales is and takes the word temporary out of that section to not confuse people. The other thing that we added on the second page is we further describe that seasonal sales locations shall be located within non-residential or interim holding. That way, we don't have seasonal sales like Christmas tree sales or plastic center sales located in a residential zone district. Any questions on 11.8? Article 1110B, accessory structures in residential and multifamily districts. I know there's a lot of corrections here, but by and large, what this does is open up the allowance for secondary buildings or accessory buildings to be located in residential districts. Currently, our provisions state that if you have a building that's 120 square feet or larger, you have to adhere to the standard setbacks of the primary building. In our single-family residential districts, for example, you have a 30-foot rear build line on the backyard, so if you go 121 feet, you actually have to move that 30 feet away from the back property line. What this does is allow for the placement closer to the property line, up to three feet. You reduce the height of the accessory building from 18 to 15, so you're not overshadowing the neighbor, but you can get it closer to the rear build line. We're finding in the permitting of these that when people have a little bit larger accessory building and they have a deck or patio, then it's pushing that accessory building out into the open yard a little too closer to the deck or patio, so we want to push it back a little closer to the property line. This would not allow for the permitting of accessory buildings that are encroaching three feet or on a utilization. It also allows for a larger building from 400 to 420 square feet. But the kicker here is the reduction of 18 to 15 feet because we are pushing closer to the adjoining property to actually not have that accessory building overshadow the neighbor. Okay, is there any questions on this?
Scott, if I can make a motion to the city secretary that Councilman Couch has left, no doubt.
If you stand like you build a residential home, you can build it back, all the way back to three foot of the property line?
No. The primary structure has to adhere to a 30-foot rear setback.
But a patio or something like that could go back?
It depends on whether or not it's defined as a vertical. If you have a vertical element, like if you have a...
Gazebo.
Yeah, gazebo, that has a vertical column or an element, then that has to, if it's part of the primary structure, that has to adhere to the 30-foot setback. But if it's an accessory building, like a gazebo or a lawnmower shed or whatever, you can get it closer to the rear property line, no closer than three feet, provided that it's no higher than 15 feet.
Only thing I can do with that?
And no larger than 420 square feet.
Okay, but what happens if somebody lives on the lake or on the canal, and they go back there and build, well, for an association for their business, but it wasn't an association. They built a tool shed back there, and the neighbor says it blocks their view of the lake. Will that come before council, before they fill it, or?
No, this would actually, if they do a lawnmower shed or a tool shed, like you said, an accessory building, or they buy one of those prefab things over at Lowe's that's on skids, then they could actually put it as close as three foot to the property line.
I know it's been a problem in the past, you know, with people wanting to do a patio or fill back, whether it's with the lake.
Right.
Or the backyard.
Right.
And I've been in some of the meetings, especially in the variance, where neighbors really throw a fit, saying, "I don't want my backyard blocked off, or I don't want the lake," you know. Will we open that up by doing this?
There's arguments both ways, but I know by and large, the comments that we're hearing on the permitting side is they want to be able to use a little bit more of their property, and then the fact that they actually have to push that building on skids closer, you know, 30-foot closer away from the rear property line, that they can't use the entirety of the back portion of the property, and it's pushing that accessory building a little too close to the house, they feel is somewhat of an infringement on their use of the entire property.
I agree, and some lots now, or you only got 30 feet, you know, or maybe 34 or 35.
In that instance, you're right, though. I think if it's a development, a good number of them have HOA Architectural Review Committees, and it'll be caught at that point. The last zoning ordinance revision that we have, I believe, is the definition for outdoor theater. What we did was basically alter it to include drive-in movie theaters, like the Brazos Drive-In, to include patrons seated in their cars for outside movie viewing as well. That was omitted from our definition. P&amp;Z recommended approval of the changes with no modifications as presented to you. I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
One note, Councilman Couch is returned. Counsel, do you have any questions for Scott? This is a public hearing. I'll open it up to the public. Is there anybody who wants to discuss any issues on that, the audience? That, I'll entertain a motion. I'm not going to read all the way through these things again, but I entertain a motion to approve the recommendations as presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
I got a motion by Councilman Parsons. Does he have a second? I've got a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Those ordinance do pass. As was stated there, I think we're just kind of cleaning our house and doing a lot of things there that we need to have done to make everything put in the right perspective here. The next item we're going to do is eight and nine together. If I may. Eight being a public hearing regarding the request of Mary Pike to rezone 1835 Acton Highway, being Lot 1R, Block 1, Mary's Place Edition, from light commercial to heavy commercial, and consider approval of an ordinance providing for the said rezoning. And I'll go ahead and read item number nine also, which is a public hearing regarding a request of Mary Pike for a specific use permit for 1835 Acton Highway to allow for truck and bus rental or leasing in a heavy commercial zoning district, and consider approval of an ordinance providing for the said SUP. We'll start out with Scott.
Well, Mayor, I think I found my zoning ordinance amendments, haven't you? Apologize to the ordinance. Apologize to the audience.
They're still with us.
Mayor, as you mentioned, this is two public hearings. One's a rezoning and one's an SUP application. What's being presented by the applicant is a request to rezone the property delineated in blue to heavy commercial. Currently, it's zone light commercial, and you can see the area bordered in pink is light commercial as well. The area bordered in red on the screen is heavy commercial, and the area located just to the west over by King's Plaza is interim holding. That was recently annexed property that hasn't undergone any kind of zoning change. As mentioned previously, we made a zoning ordinance modification to allow for the consideration of trailers and trucks rentals on property in heavy commercial with the issuance of an SUP by council. The applicant is wanting to place a truck and trailer rental location at this particular site, hence the subsequent SUP request. P&amp;Z opened a public hearing and deliberated on this particular location and issued three conditions. They are as follows. One, that the aggregate of trucks and trailers on site shall not exceed any more than 12 at any given point in time. The placement of the trucks and trailers shall be confined to the backyard or the west side of the property. Give me another shot of the land if I can. So basically, where that subject property arrow is, is where the placement of the inventory will be confined and behind the primary building. And lastly, that the term of the SUP shall be for two years, after which it will automatically expire and become null and void. There was some discussion about the placement along the streetscape and the visibility. During the P&amp;Z hearing, there was a mutual agreement between P&amp;Z and the applicant regarding the number of trucks and trailers and the cap of 12. P&amp;Z expressly wanted the two-year term to at least beta-test this and see how it would perform over the two-year period, knowing that if the applicant and the property owner operated within the confines of the ordinance and didn't have any public appearance issue along Plaza Drive, that it had the potential to be re-upped and extended at a later date after the two years was up. So P&amp;Z recommended approval of the rezoning request to the base heavy commercial district and approval of the SUP with the three conditions as mentioned.
Thank you, Scott. This is, I will now open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wishing to speak on this topic? I think we do have one person, William D. Pike, wanting to discuss this item. If you could, go ahead and state your name and your address for our reporting secretary, please.
My name is William Pike. The address is 5114 Lovistico.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions for Mr. Pike?
Are you going to have any kind of offense around that or anything with Pike?
We currently don't, and I don't believe it was discussed in the public portion of the hearing.
I drove out here and looked at it. My fat Mary came by and visited with me for a minute about it. I have no problem with it. I'm for it, and I think it should be commercial like everything else out there. But right around the corner from you, there's a mini warehouse, storage, and they got them parked out in front and everything else. That's not where you're talking about, is it?
Are you talking about over on King's Plaza?
No, I'm talking about on Acton, on four, right around the corner from where you're at, and I know where your building is now. Are you talking about doing them behind there?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's another problem that we got further. You don't want to talk about Scott?
Yes, if you actually take Acton Road and then swing around the corner and start heading west on the right-hand side, that is a portion of property that, when it was annexed, it was grandfathered in and registered as a place that had a U-Haul business.
They already had them out there.
Upon annexation, correct.
What is the ingress and egress? Is it beside the building, or is there a cut into the pavement on Plaza Drive?
There is a cut. There's an entrance already in the curving.
And does the, Scott, does the ordinance or code require any type of paving or asphalt or?
And the applicant's aware of that. It does require approved hard surface, which is either asphalt or concrete. That will have to be installed and inspected by our inspectors before the inventory goes out there. Certainly, the inventory can't be placed on the grassy area. That would be a violation.
And so it'll be a driveway that goes, exit on Plaza Drive as opposed to?
It'll be an approved hard surface for the storage area, and then that will have to have a throat that actually goes down to the approach for exit on Plaza Drive.
Mr. Pike, is there a number of trucks you plan on having there? Have you got those figures or?
Well, it's stated there is a limit of 12 vehicles.
12, okay.
Although around the corner.
But I've seen the 12 on there, but is that a combination of trucks, trailers, or whatever? Because some trailers would be smaller than others. I mean, if you had 12 large trailers, would that fit?
My understanding that it's all items, all vehicles. Whether they be self-propelled trucks or a towed trailer.
And P&amp;Z discussed that. They want the applicant to have the option of either 12 trucks or 12 trailers or combination in between.
So the biggest case scenario would be the 12 large trucks possibly you could have there.
Correct.
Given the worst case, if you want to look at it.
Worst case or best case for yourself?
Certainly.
Counsel, any more questions for Mr. Pike?
Do you feel like the 12 is going to be enough?
Oh, you're allowed.
It is limiting. Typically, down the street from this location, another such facility, we've taken account from time to time, and we see 16 to 18 there at all times. I assume that's more or less typical. 12 is somewhat restricted, but as a trial for a two-year period, we're willing to go along with the need.
See, if we fast this, Scott, can he come back a year from now and try to raise that up from, if he sees the need? It's not a problem out there.
He can make a, I would say, he can make an amendment, a proposal to amend the existing SUP that's in place to increase the number, if he filed an application.
There'll be 14 out there this weekend, the other place I counsel. So, you know, I don't know. I don't know. Maybe 12 or 18, we'll try that. If it doesn't work, what you're saying is to come back and try to get an amendment.
Counsel, any more questions for Mr. Pike?
Would you like to increase that number?
Make sure you're speaking into the mic.
Would you like to increase that number while we're discussing it, if there's adequate ground?
It would be beneficial economically, but we would not want to do it if it increased the chances of the toll paying failing improvement. Is that clear? Financially, yes, we would love it improved, but we do not want to burn bridges.
Right, no, I don't think that's an issue.
We certainly have sufficient property there from many of them.
Scott, do you see downside to bumping that number to 16?
It's council's discretion. I know the report's coming to you from the deliberations of P&amp;Z at 12, but certainly council has the discretion to modify that before it gets approved.
Was a greater number talked about at the P&amp;Z?
No, I don't think we had a set number. I think that basically, the original application came to us as a use to allow for the trailers and trucks, and then, once we hit P&amp;Z, then the numerical value discussion started to ensue.
I'd like to leave it at 15 and try that, but give me three more. That's our answer, that's I am. We ain't got a motion yet.
We can sure enter it into the motion if that's what we want to do. Any more questions for Mr. Pike? Thank you, Mr. Pike. We'll now close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any more remarks or statements on number eight or number nine? With that, I'll close the public hearing. I'll go ahead with number eight first and entertain a motion to approve the said ordinance providing for the said rezoning. Do I have a motion?
So move.
We got a motion by Councilman Parsons. We got a second by, this Councilman Couch. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. That ordinance does pass. Our next one, we will entertain a motion to recommend approval of the SUP to allow for trucks and trailer rental lease with the following terms and condition, and I'm going to add the 15 versus the 12, in the aggregated of the truck sales on site shall not exceed more than 15, and B, the placement of the trucks and trailers shall be confined to the backyard, which is the west side of the property, and behind the primary building, and, number C, the term of the SUP shall be for a two-year, after which will automatically expire and become void. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen. I got a second by Councilman Perkel. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. That does approve. Our next item up is our discussion of the status of our Opera House redevelopment project and consider and approve any recommendations from the Opera House Redevelopment Committee. Thank you, Scott. Mr. McKeefen, I'm going to let you kick this off. I think we've got a new person who wants to talk tonight.
We have Rob. Let me come forward, please. Rob is our construction manager at the site. I'm going to let him discuss the process of where we're at, the status of the project at this point.
We don't recognize him without his hard hat. Rob, could you state your name and address on there and start talking?
My name's Rob Keane, and I live at 322 Meandering Way, Granbury, Texas. What do you want me to do?
Well, just give us an update on exactly what's been done there at the project site. Well, just give us an update on exactly what's been done there at the project site.
Rob, normally what we have Bill do is go ahead and give us an update, and we usually have to tell him to speak into the mic, so make sure you, there you go, and just let us know what's going on, some of the good things that's going on out there and.
Everything that's out there that's going on is good.
Okay.
Progress is moving along really good. We just poured the second floor of the stage house today. The inside of the theater part, the third floor will be installed tomorrow. All HVAC is in, ready for its drops. Our metal roof will start going on starting tomorrow over the stage house. We are definitely on schedule so that the Christmas program can be done in there. We're not running into any problems. We've got our stone sample up, looked at. Really don't have any issues. Everything's going pretty smooth. I welcome anybody to come by and visit with it with me. I'm glad to show them these are working. Can you all hear me?
Oh, now I can hear it.
That's the main person right there.
Did you get everything I said?
Some of it.
But anyway, everything is running smooth out there, and it is on schedule. We're not, we don't have any long lead time items that are going to hurt us as of yet. Progress is going well, as the mayor and city manager both steam.
Are you projecting maybe the roof would be on in how many days such that it would help you in terms of weather?
I didn't hear you.
How soon would you have the roof on it? You're getting real close, aren't you?
We should have the roof on it by the end of this month.
Okay.
It should be totally roofed by the end of this month, both the theater and the stage house. We have an application into the state for the closure of 377, alternate 377, in order to take that roof off, but we, I am second thinking about that differently now. I'm thinking we're going to just take it off from the backside once we get the back roof on, so we don't have to close down that portion of alternate 377.
Bill Scott is on vacation, so that's why we had asked you to be here, but we're going to bring forward a change order request, a zero net request on the stone. We're going to change the allocation such that we can do now the white stone, the Granbury, I guess you'd call it, Austin chalk stone.
Yeah.
And that's, and actually, they put in a example of what we're going to, we're going to do the light mortar, so it's white, the white mortar with the white stone, and we're going to be able to cover the whole backside of the Opera House with that white stone now.
Yes.
With no added cost.
Right.
How do we do that?
Well, we're redirecting an allocation for, I'm trying to think which allocation it was. Oh, well, for one thing, we're going to absorb the site and grading and so forth. We feel that there was an allocation that's not needed, and we can handle, from the city, we can handle that grading for the parking lot and so forth.
I thought that wasn't part of it anyway.
Well, no, there was an allocation there that we've agreed to take on.
Not on, not in $3.4 million. It was not part of it.
Yeah.
Now it was.
Yeah, that's what Bill said. That's why we agreed, in fact, Alva actually agreed to handle that, so we could change the.
Where did you knock off?
As I remember, it was close to $30,000. And so I ran that by Alva. Alva says he can assume that responsibility. Plus, the grading is not needed as much now because they changed the elevation of the back of the building, such that there's not a lot of that site work needed, so we're going to move that over to the stone.
What stone was we going to put on there?
We're going to put on split face block.
Split block, block. Walmart.
Walmart block, yeah. Walmart block. I can't believe you all.
Good analogy, Mickey.
I've got a question over the.
Yes, sir.
The lumber. I've been looking at it, driving by every day. It's got to be cedar. You had some six, about two and a half by 10 or 12, eight, six and eight, long back in the back. Was that a cedar, but there's not a knot shown on any of it? That's probably.
It's Doug fir, and it's a structural component to carry the glue lamp beams that are in there. And the reason that you don't see any knots is because when you deal with a Douglas fir beam or post like that, you don't want knots because it's got to hold up that support. And so, but it's not cedar. It is Douglas fir.
It looks expensive.
It's expensive.
But it looks good from the road. I know that.
Yeah, it's real pretty wood, but it'll get covered up. You won't ever see it again, so.
When do you think you'll have the front staircase framed?
We're hoping by the end of the month that those are in. The thing that is holding us back on starting those is we're waiting for the railing to arrive from Italy, because the railing has to match the stairs. So, my railing guy and my stair guy will work in coordination with each other so that it all matches, so that there's no reef avenue. Once it gets here, it'll lock right to the stairs as they go up. So, that'll be the last thing we frame in, but that should start as early as next week.
Okay. Any other questions?
I would have a question about, how's the coordination of the parking lot and the finish out of the building?
We had, you know, we had a meeting with Alva and with Bill Scott. They came to an agreement that everything was satisfactory, and that I was going to handle the grading, and there is no issue.
Okay. So, we've got a design for the parking lot?
Yeah. Hibbs and Todd is working on that. Yes, it's not complete yet, but it's coming together.
Right. The only serious grading issue that is on that east side, where the building stands up a little higher than what the street level is. And once we get our, you don't want to call it a patio, but our, right outside that one exit door, and then the handicap ramp on there, then it won't look so severe. But right now, it looks like there's a hole in the ground right there on the east side, but once we put in the stoop for the door and then the handicap ramp and the stairs down to the sidewalk, then it won't be as severe as it is.
Do we have landscape for lanes and irrigation and all that for that parking lot?
Not from Hibbs and Todd.
No, not from us.
They're doing that?
Yeah.
What's that cost?
Well, let's go back and look at it, but we approved the engineering.
Not much landscaping, what is it, asphalt?
No. Primarily mostly asphalt. Okay. That's all I got. Two or three other things I want to cover about the Opera House.
Thank you, Rob.
Your word.
Okay. First of all, we have signed an agreement with Opera Guild, and they have in fact, they did deliver the check today. We now have a check for $24,000, is that? Yes. And so, we were able to come to an agreement with them that the curtain would be, they wrote the check to Granbury Historical Properties, and that the curtain will belong to Granbury Historical Properties once it's installed, and they are gracious and very generous to donate that curtain to us, and we appreciate that from.
Very much.
Opera Guild.
Thank you.
Secondly, we have one of the issues that was raised by Bill Scott a month ago now, I guess it was, was that we really needed to talk about Wi-Fi and about Internet and everything else, and so Tony Toll and Jeff Gals, who represented Bill Scott, and I had a meeting, and we talked about a plan to bring technology into the Opera House, to make sure that the Opera House of the 1880s is technologically savvy, okay, and will last for the next 10 years, and I'll let Tony Toll explain.
Thank you, Mayor, Pro Tem, City Council, and City Manager. Wayne had asked me to meet with Bill Scott and himself and some others to discuss where they were headed as far as networking within the building. They had brought some plans. It was the first time I'd seen them. I believe they were marked up by Andrew Barris as to what he thought he was going to need, and Wayne made a good point. I had expressed that if we were going to look at this, we needed to look at this with a five to 10-year idea of where are we going to be in five to 10 years, because what they're using in technology today is not what they're going to be using in technology in five years. This is the same approach that I took at the conference center when I designed all of the things that are in the conference center. If you're going to invest your money in this, you need to make it so that it lasts long-term. I looked at the data drops that they had marked up on the plans. I informed them that they were way inadequate for what they were looking to try and do. I had, Wayne had asked me about Wi-Fi. Could we put Wi-Fi in this building? And I informed him that I thought that that would be a much better approach long-term if we did it in the correct way for the number of people that are going to occupy this building at peak times. I said, you don't want to put something off the shelf that you can go buy at Staples. You want something that's going to be able to service 200 to 250 people that are in this building, so that if they do use it, it works. Mr. Couch knows exactly what I'm talking about from circumstances under city, Wi-Fi and so's Councilman Parsons. So, what I did is I left the meeting and I did, I went to the Taggart List serve, which is what I go to when I have questions for all my other IT directors in the state. I asked three questions. The first question I asked is, who has public venues in their cities that they provide Wi-Fi? And it was probably 85 to 90% of them answered that they did. I then asked, what equipment are you using to provide this for, for large numbers? 95% of them are using the same equipment that you see specked out on the hardware sheets that I gave you. It's Cisco Aronet. This is the same equipment that if you look at the GISD buildings, it's the same that is in all of their buildings. It's the same that's in the hospitals. When you look at wireless inside buildings for large numbers, everybody compares themselves to Cisco, because they're the benchmark for wireless inside buildings. I then asked them, do you charge or is it free? And it was about a 60, 40, 65, 35 split. About 65% of them do not charge in their public venues. 35, 30% said they did. That was another question that I was asked. Could we charge for this? I explained that the plan that I was going to present to them would be a dual-use wireless plan. You would have half of the network available to the people that work in there. Anything that Mr. Barris or any other theater company needed to do to use a network, they would be able to use the wireless side for that network. They would not have to plug into a wall. And when you look long-term, you know, if you put on the 50,000 stratosphere look in the future, everything is headed towards wireless. You're going to slowly move away from wired connections. So, I'm wanting something that if you're going to put the money into this, is going to last you, and you're going to be able to use it for that type of use. The other thing you want to be able to do is you want to be able to segregate that network traffic off. You want your people who are working at the Opera House separate from your people who are coming in as customers. This plan allows that. It puts a, what's called a wireless controller in place, so that you can take that network and segregate it. So, you have half of it for the people who work in the building, and you have half of it, or however you want to split that up. You have the other side of the network for the people who are patrons. The costs that you see on the estimates that I gave you are based upon this map. What I did is I engaged the Cisco engineers to give me a preliminary estimate based on drawings. Now, I want to stress that this is not the way to decide what you're going to put in the building. This is strictly a preliminary way to get numbers together of what my maximum hardware costs are going to be. And as you can see, they're estimating six to eight access points for this building, but that's strictly based off of drawings. The correct way to do this is to do a wireless survey, where I come in and I put transponders all through the buildings, and I use a signal meter that tells me exactly how much dB I'm getting at any point in the building, based on where I may or may not have an access point. Okay? That's the correct way to do it. That is in one of the services costs that's on the sheets that I gave you. And what I want you to understand is, is based on doing that survey, that site survey, your hardware costs may go down, because I believe this, based on my experience, is probably one to two access points more than what the site survey is going to show we will need. So, the hardware costs that you are looking at is a maximum projected cost. I believe those costs will go down. They will not go more than that. Okay? The controller allows you to split those two off. The other portion of the services is for Cisco to come out, do the install, do the configuration, and train my staff how to use the Cisco equipment, because one of the things that we talked about in this meeting was being able to take this controller and allow patrons to be able to get on and automatically download the playbill onto their phone or their iPad, or the schedule for the next show of when it's going to be, so that as soon as they connect to that network, that wireless network, you've got a captured audience that you can broadcast your advertising to. We do not know how to use that controller. We have never used one. That's what we got to have. We got to have them here to install, configure, and train us how to do it. So, that's why you have the additional 7,900 in services. That's for the Cisco folks to come out and do this. One of the other reasons that I am pushing Cisco is, in the budget workshop, one of the things that you saw in next year's budget is a VoIP phone system installed across the entire city. What I'm proposing in that next year is Cisco VoIP, okay? Hence, the Cisco equipment that I'm proposing here, because it will work with what we're planning on doing next year with a VoIP phone system. So, there's some reasoning behind what I'm proposing here. I'm not for or against it either way. I was asked to put together a plan. That's what the plan is. This is based on my recommendations from, not just myself, but what I got from IT directors across the state, and I think this is a very good, long-term plan for a building that you're spending a lot of money on, that I think if you were to open this building after spending that much money on it, and people walk in, they're not going to have a very good wireless signal in that building. I think your construction managers is going to attest to the fact, you've got a lot of steel, and you've got a lot of thick rock in that building, and I cannot guarantee you that they're going to be able to get a adequate wireless cellular signal to do anything with. Okay? So, you really need to give them something to make up for that loss of being in your building. And what better way than to capture them on your wireless and send them what you want to be able to send them to push the plans and the, or the programs that you're planning on having in that building, and that's what this does. These access points that I'm specking out in here are good for 200 to 300 simultaneous connections at one time, and you've got at least two of those that are going to be in your main auditorium area. So, I think this is a very good, long-term plan. Your total cost is around, I didn't add it up, I think it's 26, 27,000, and I will tell you, the hardware cost alone, before I started my bartering with the vendor, was 24,000. I'm now down to 15,000, which also includes one year of support and maintenance on all the equipment. So, I think I've actually got us a pretty good price. It's 40% off, 45% off of the DIR cost, which is the byboard cost. So, I've tried to do as hard a negotiating as I can to get this price down, because I know it's an add-on to the contract. I'm trying to get it in as low as we can, because I know you're having to go back to add this. So, I'm be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Well, let me say just real quickly, what would this do? Well, it would allow the customers of the Opera House to come in and purchase a download of the program, okay? I mean, you could. you could download it into their tablet or whatever they would like to have, or phone. So they would have it electronically as opposed to printing it on there.
This system allows you to do any of those kind of things that you can think of. It pretty much is limitless as far as how you want to capture them, how you want them to be able to pay for things, what you want to give away for free. You're going to have complete control of that.
We're going to have, like, we have world-renowned speakers, which some people have mentioned they'd like to see in there. You could have them where they could have surveys, they could send questions, they could communicate to the speaker and download the, you know, the program itself. It just makes it for a lot more interactive-type audience, even when technology goes that way, which looks like it's going.
Right. I will tell you additionally, I had Charter in today, because my plan is to add fiber to that building before it is finished, to tie that building into our entire city fiber network, so that you are going to be able to manage anything in that building from here or any other building that the city has. That's one of the things I was talking about with the phone system. They need to be on our fiber, tied back into us for all of these things in the future that we hopefully will look at doing in the city. Charter also asked if they could put a proposal together. I told them, "I'm more than willing to see what kind of dollars they have." So they may come back with a lower cost for this same equipment. So what I'm telling you here is, the maximum cost that I see this project being is what you have in front of you tonight. It will not be higher.
And it is cheaper to put it in now than it is to-
And it is cheaper to put it in now than later.
We would like to have some comment from the council as to where they want us to proceed on this.
I'm confused. You know, I'm the dummy up here when it comes to computers. Quote me on that. But if you go to a play, 250 people have got their laptops or they're still out here doing that, and it's all lit up, isn't that going to attract from other people?
Yeah. One of the things with this controller is, is it allows you to turn the service on and off during the program. So if Andrew or whoever is running the theater decides that, "Okay, I need to schedule this to cut off at this time, and I need it to cut back on at this time," the controller allows-
Yeah. You would make it available prior to the play at intermission perhaps, and then at the end of the play.
I could see it when you had speakers there, but $28,000 is a lot of money for an opera house to have. Does every opera house have one now? I don't know.
Most, like I said, about 85% of the public venues, whether it's theaters, whether it's libraries, where it's meeting rooms, all of the other city IT directors told me they had public Wi-Fi in there. Now, understand that this is not just for your patrons. This is also for the people who are going to be working in there, who have their laptops or their desktops that do not have a jack in the wall that they can connect to. So the other thing you have to remember too is, is what is this building going to use for their ticket sales? What are they going to use for their scheduling? Nobody's told me anything about what they're using in the way of software to manage and run this thing. It's got to get a signal back on the network, back over to here, as a minimum, whether it's hosted, then it's going to have to get back to the internet. You have to have some type of network in here. I'm trying to give you a solution that is dual-use, both the business side and the public side. That's what I'm proposing here.
How are they doing it now at Granbury Labs?
I have no idea. No idea at all.
Well, they just have a computer with a program that they record it on that. It's almost just like a regular computer. It's not coming in over a phone or making reservations. I mean, you have to be that you can talk to them on the phone. I mean, they have it in the system. At least they did at the time I saw it, but I'm not sure the Chris-
Councilman, looking this over, it looks like it's something that we need to consider to put into our opera house, because there's a lot of things they can do with their performances. They can also use this as they go into performances and use the diminutive lights that's like computerized with electronics. But I think it's something that we would need to bring to the Opera House Advisory Board, where we can look this over and dissect it and put the numbers in place where they need to be, or where we think we can take away to add on, and see, you know, the importance of this, and then take it to the council and show exactly what we've done with this. Because this is some big numbers, but I think it's important that we look at this, because like Tony stated, and I know the council agrees with it, that we don't want to shortcut this opera house by any means, and we want to make it as classy as we can. And this is part of, this is the direction we're going, I believe.
I'd also like to have Andrew here to explain to us, explain that.
Right. And what's what we may do is, because he is on the advisory board, that we bring him in here to describe or to identify the uses for this, because I don't know all of them, but I'm sure there's a lot of technical uses that you could use here.
Well, one thing is, you know, if we talk about doing a lecture series to where it'd be interactive with whoever the guest was, you know, that would be probably more prevalent in terms of use.
And there may be some things that we put on there that we can take away from when we add this here, because this is going to be the technology that we want to put into this thing, so.
Yeah. I mean, one of the points that I made at the meeting was, is when you're looking at this, the ideas of what you are going or possibly going to do with this won't come to you for another two years. And then what's going to happen is, is in two years, you're going to think of something, or something's going to come up, and you're going to go, "Well, I can't do that now. I would have been able to, but I can't now." And we've seen the same thing at the conference center. The technology that we put at the conference center, when we first opened that conference center, there was some stuff we weren't using. There's not any part of that technology we're not using now. And that's my advice to you, is with what you're spending on this, 26,000, 27,000 is a small amount to spend to have that functionality three, five, 10 years out. And that's my advice.
I don't disagree with you, and I do want to be the nicest opera house in the state of Texas, but it's also, it's a taxpayer's toss mahal. And, you know, we've got a, if it's something like Mayor Prokhem said, we can cut out, you know, Andrew may come and explain. I understand it, Tony, but right now, I do believe with speeches, it'd be good. We ain't done any of that stuff yet that we was going to do whenever we spent 100,000 over to the Granbury Labs. So old saying is, proof is in the pudding. And I haven't seen the proof yet. So I don't want to spend taxpayers' dollar tonight.
To quote an old governor, "It's a plan." Plan can be changed. And that's all it is.
No, no, no. I agree with you. I'm not saying it doesn't need to be done, but I agree with Mayor Prokhem. I think it's something the committee ought to look at-
We need to take it through the-
And bring back to the advisory board.
How long is this bid good for, Tony?
Actually, this bid right now is probably good for the next 30 days. So it's totally up to y'all. I mean-
Well, we do need to sit with the advisory council, and get some other people involved in this, and find out exactly what direction we want to go, because, you know, I'm with Councilman Allen. We need to watch our budget, but yet we don't want to cut it where we, in the long run, we wish we had enough, so.
And that's why I was saying, you know, until the building is a little more finished out, I cannot refine this any more than I've refined it.
Okay.
Great job.
But also, ask the city manager to talk to Bill Scott and see if there were any credits available on the-
Yeah, we can look at it.
Hardwiring, or the, because there was hardwired data points in the original plan. I don't know where that would be in the cost, so.
And that's what I was talking about, you know, earlier, Mickey, that we could possibly take some of those things out of that equation that we've been fighting with this whole time and putting money towards. So possibly some savings there. Go ahead, Wayne.
No, I just wanted to say that the reason I wanted to bring it forward, just to discuss it, was that, you know, that was brought up before, that he was concerned about the data design. And so I just wanted the council to know that we have addressed it, and that now we've got to go back. And we'll go back through the committee and take it back through there.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Counsel, any more discussion on the opera house? With that, we'll close that discussion. Moving on to the next item here, we've got item number 11 and 12. Counsel, note that 11 and 12 have been reversed. We've got to approve or disapprove number 12 before we can go into 11. So I'm going to read item 12 first, to discuss and propose the proposed 2013-2014 physical year tax rate for the City of Granbury, and vote to place a proposal to adopt the tax rate of .399260 on the agenda for a future of city council meeting as an action item. I'm going to start out with Ava Gregory, if you would come up, and you're still awake back there. Let the council know where we're at on this, please.
All right. Our current property tax rate is at 39926, but we had received words from Grexure, our Hood County appraisal district, who calculated our effective tax rate to be .394593. And as the agenda notes, that's the tax rate that would produce the same amount of taxes if levied on the same properties in both years. If we stay with our current tax rate of 39926, we will have to have two public hearings, and that is noted on your agenda as well. We had proposed to schedule those hearings for August 20th and August 27th. And if we go with the effective tax rate, as calculated by the appraisal district, we would not have to have those hearings. The difference in tax rate between the effective tax rate and the proposed tax rate, what will affect our budget is about $45,000.
Thank you. Any questions on that, counsel?
No. I want to say thank Wayne, and thank you, Ava. Y'all done a great job on getting lower our taxes.
I would, as a council member, I would like to make a motion that we accept the tax rate of 394593 and adopt that for the 2013-2014 physical year tax rate for the City of Granbury.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Allen. Any more discussion on that, counsel? If not, all entertaining motion, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. We will approve the tax rate of 394593.
And that will not require any further public hearings?
Right. We'll next move on to item number 11, which is, "Present the 2013-2014 physical year budget to council and set the date, time, and place for a public hearing and the said proposed budget." Ava, if you want to enlighten us on that one?
Yes. Mayor Prokhem, city council. We have prepared the proposed budget book and have given it to the councils, and the city secretary's office has the copy now as well. As of July 31st, we are required to wait 15 days before we publish the notice on the hearing of the budget. And that will be published on, the hearing on the budget will be published on August 17th. At this time, if you have scheduled, or if you have agreed to go with the effective tax rate, the agenda will show that the public hearing will be on the budget on September 3rd. At that date, and the budget will be able to be adopted, and right after that, the tax rate would be adopted as well. The changes to the budget after the budget workshop has been sent to you for both general fund and utility fund. All the changes that we have made since the budget workshop are detailed in that report I had emailed you. If you have any questions on that.
Counsel, if you've looked at the budget, if there's anything on that budget that you would like to change at this time, or to discuss, then we can do so now.
Are we going to have another workshop on this before it goes to final vote?
No, no, sorry.
Go ahead, Wayne.
No, I mean, we can cut it quickly, we can change it, and we'll go forward. I mean, that's this reconciliations, does everybody have a reconciliations?
Uh, you know, the major components, you can go through them, but we did have to take out the proposed grant that we were thinking about getting, that we hoped we would get on the third phase of the Icah and Black Trail. So we did take that out. We added the consulting expense for the police for the future building.
No, it came by email. Do you have copies of the reconciliation?
Ava's got several copies. Go ahead, Wayne.
That first change, what affected our budget was the final numbers from the appraisal district that had decreased our revenues by 154,814. We have changed the collection rate from 99% to 100%. That's increased the revenue by 39,000. And it also, our required reserve for 1% have changed as well. The proposed changes after the workshop are the first portion of the sheet I'm showing you. The first change was removing the contract labor from the fire department for 17,469. This expense was already budgeted in the salary line item. We have also added $20,000 for the police building, for future police building consulting expense. We have decreased, I'm sorry, we have increased the amortization expense for the fire truck, for the fire department, by $1,500.
How much?
$1,500. We had increased the fire appreciation expense by $2,500. And we received the final letter from the Hood County appraisal district, the required budget, what the city has to provide, and we had to increase our expense by $2,200. I have noted that for expenses, the increase is a negative number, and the decrease is a positive number. So this came after the budget workshop. We have made additional changes to the budget as well, and those are listed below. The revenue changes are, again, the positive number will be an increase, negative number is a decrease. We have made some changes for freeze and nickels engineering revenue. We increased it by $18,000. We adjusted the concession for park revenue, reduced the revenue by $5,000. We have added to the budget the lawsuit expense for $25,000, adjusted our sales tax revenue projection by $53,000, adjusted our license and permits revenue projection by $84,000. And as Wayne mentioned, we had removed the Gordon House grant revenue project for $787,000, and adjusted hotel occupancy tax revenue by $23,000. I'm trying to just hit the highlights mainly. For expenses, negative number is an increase, and a positive number is a decrease. As we have adjusted the engineering revenue, what I mentioned before, by $18,000, we have also increased the expenses for the engineering cost by $15,000. Park concession expense was reduced, and I mentioned earlier, the revenue was reduced as well. This was just a miscalculation on our side when we calculated the margins, what we had received for concession revenue. There was a small adjustment for telephone expense for airport. We also have removed the 3% raises for general fund and tourism fund for new positions. We had added the opera house grand opening expense of $15,000. As I mentioned before, the lake suit estimated expense of $25,000, what was encumbered. We adjusted the budget by that. We had made the changes that we had received after the salary survey, what affected the general fund by $39,000, and the airport fund about $7,000. We had added tram utility vehicle for the- We had added tram utility vehicle for the tourism fund in the amount of $39,000. And this is the other portion of the Gordon House where we removed the revenue and we also removed the expenses for the Gordon House in the amount of $787,000. So at the budget workshop, the general fund surplus was $15,000, what we were showing to you at that time. Now the general fund surplus is $231 after all these changes.
Wayne, when we were at budget workshop, you know, when we were going over the salary survey and we were going to get into the different salaries and pay increases and so forth, you said that we were going to have an executive session to discuss these things. And yet I haven't been informed of anything of that sort.
Did you discuss the salary survey?
Yes. We didn't, we didn't want to discuss it after the budget workshop as far as individual pay, and it was suggested that we need to do that in executive session. And here we are facing the finalization of the budget, and we never had that meeting.
I don't remember saying what you said. I mean, I may have missed that. I missed some-
One thing-
We rarely talk, we rarely talk about the individual salaries, and we can give you a list of them, but the salary survey was adjusted, recommended based on grades that were set up. Some people were outside that grade, and it was a big move to those grades based on the salary survey.
What did we do to the one that was overpaid?
Well, what we're doing is, that particular situation is, we're not going to give them a 3% raise, but we're going to give them a recognition award. That's what normal, that's normally done so that it doesn't increase their salaries. If they're over, we're not going to continue to let them grow over the maximum.
But I thought we were going to take, if it was a big jump, we were going to take it over a two or three-year period. And I don't know-
Well, she presented that, but the amount was so, was so small that she said it really wasn't, I mean, you could break the adjustment into 15,000, I mean, between 15 and 39, or 20,000 and 30,000. It just seemed like to go ahead and make the adjustment all at once.
The one thing I do remember us talking about in the executive session was, Gary, and maybe I've rung on this, but-
We were going to talk about-
You can't talk about stuff in executive session out here.
No, 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 I'm not talking about that, Gary. I'm saying one thing we said we were going to talk about, or let's put it this way, one thing was put on the agenda, was about the, the-
Reorganization.
Yeah, reorganization.
What I remember is then we-
Yeah, right. Yeah.
We're going to talk about that in the next meeting.
Yeah.
We'll schedule a picture session. But that really doesn't have any impact with the overall budget itself. It could, I mean, but basically, we're going to talk about that, you know, it's really more of what, how you move departments around.
Well, on this deal right here, Wayne, and I'll let Gary get talking again here, I know he's wanting to say something, but like with Becky leaving and reshuffle her position, that should give us more money for, let me see how to say this, our payroll shouldn't be as expensive.
Well, we're reorganizing, and there may be some savings there.
Well, you're going to have to hire that position.
Well, not how we plan to reorganize.
But counsel, I think this is still in the budget. This was generated before that time, so that number's probably in there, and if that comes out later on, then, you know, that'd be, that'd be money out there. But this was generated with her in place. And so with our reorganization and what we do, and if we bring somebody back into the place, then, then those numbers will be, you know, will adjust. But what we're talking about right now is what we talked about at the budget meeting. And we did talk about, we did talk about the salaries when we had the listing of them. And when we talked about the caps, when somebody actually was due more money, but they were at the top of their range, then a, then a, a award, a service award was submitted, and that number wasn't on there. But later on, Wayne has put those numbers in there to where we can put them in these figures right now.
Well, I-
So what you're seeing is what he, what came about then, so.
Well, it's just my understanding that, you know, the money we spent on the, on the salary survey-
Right.
-that we didn't want to get into particular department pay at the budget workshop, that we're going to do that in the executive session. That was my understanding.
But we did get into it. I mean, we discussed it, the pay.
We haven't discussed this in the-
We had, no, we haven't discussed it in executive session. We discussed it at the workshop, though it was there, the numbers were there.
Right, survey.
Okay. Well, and what they were getting paid presently and what they were going to get paid after the 3%, what the 3% was going to give them and what the additional was going to give them.
Is that what you want to do, Gary?
I mean, you want to talk about individual, individuals?
Well, yeah, I wanted the opportunity to go through that and, and look at what the salary survey said, the recommendation was, and then what that's equated to in dollars for that particular person. Just to have that discussion and an understanding of what would make that person-
Unless the employee reports directly to the city council, you can't go into executive session to talk about some of these things.
What I can do is sit down with the person and-
Okay.
Counsel, any more discussion on the, the budget? With that, I entertain a motion to, I entertain a motion that we set the hearing, set the public hearing for September 3rd at 6:00 PM in the council chambers for the proposed budget. Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion that we set that public hearing for September the 3rd. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Parsons. All in favor say aye.
Can I ask a question on that?
We have, Councilman Allen.
Are we, are we going to go over anything at that meeting or is it just a done deal now?
We can.
The reason I'm asking is, in the past, we've had a couple meetings, after we had a workshop, we've had another workshop for like an hour or two on budget? Don't move.
No, we basically, we make these, am I wrong here?
No.
I mean, you know, what we've done is, we've had public hearings where people could ask questions.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
But, but counsel, at that, at that meeting, we can make, and that's why I encourage you to look at, look at the numbers, look at the budget, and if we have questions or items on there that we want to discuss at that time, or you want to make some changes to or this and that, we, we can surely look at that. I wouldn't want to change the whole thing, but at this time, we can do that.
On September 3rd, I'll set meetings up with you guys, if you want more individual meetings.
Please look at the package.
Yeah, but this is the reconciling. We got to a point where we said we want to do these changes, and that's what this reconciling is, we, is how we adjusted from that, you know, remote session.
Um, okay. I just thought something. Does the, this budget reflect hiring an HR, an HR person?
Yes.
Add it in there.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. We will have the budget review on September 3rd at 6:00 PM in the council chambers.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, I'm sorry. The public hearing for the proposed budget will be on September the 3rd. Stay with the council. At this time, I'll now declare the Granbury City Council is convened into open session that all members, except the mayor Ricky Pratt, is present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section, Section 551.071, consultation with our attorney. Now we're reconvened from executive session with no action taken. Counsel, do you have a motion?
Mr. Mayor Prokem, I make a motion to authorize the attorney to negotiate with J Mills Contracting Inc. with regards to issues discussed in executive session.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. We will enter into a decision. At this time, if there's no further discussion with the council, this council meeting is adjourned.